A pleasant good morning to our viewing audience. I am Nurse Dineshka Moss, the manager of the clinical care unit here at Bahama Health. So today we want to welcome you to another town hall meeting where we'll be discussing COVID-19 hospitalizations, mortality and vaccinations. And while we've learned a lot over the last year about this deadly disease, it's important for us to remain current as to how this disease is progressing and any new information that's applicable to what we want to do moving forward as the country now opens up. So today we've invited Dr. Seash, who is a pediatrician scientist currently training in pediatric infectious disease at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. He holds an M.D. and a PhD in cell and molecular biology from the University of Pennsylvania. His clinical interests includes global health and tropical infectious disease, and his research focuses on malaria genetics and drug development. Dr. Seash, a pleasant good morning, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me, inviting me to come talk today. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, good, so let me just share my screen. Then I will enter mode and can everyone see my slides? Perfect, okay. So, thank you Nurse Moss for introducing me. I, my name is Seash or Dr. Seash, and I am a second year fellow in infectious diseases at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. For those of you who don't know, the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia is located in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We're actually the oldest children's hospital in the United States and the second oldest hospital dedicated to children in the world. And we are a fairly large hospital. We have 633 beds, we have a large neonatal intensive care unit, ICUs for both cardiac and non-cardiac patients. And we see it, last year we saw about 24,800 patients through our hospital and 52,900 emergency room visits. And unfortunately with that, we've seen a lot of COVID in the last, last year. And so that's what I'm here to talk about today. I don't think we need to talk a lot about the history of COVID-19. I think probably by this point, everyone here knows about it. It's a disease that's caused by a respiratory virus that was named SARS-CoV-2. It was first identified in China in the province of Hubei in January of last year. And by March of last year, the World Health Organization had declared it a global pandemic. To date, it has caused over 244 million global cases and over 4.9 million global deaths. And I think it's important to recognize that both of those numbers are probably very low and that we've missed a lot of cases and deaths as this virus has raged around the globe. In the last 19 months or so since this virus was declared a pandemic, we've learned a huge amount about it. But we're continuing to learn new things about how it works every day. So if we look at COVID-19 in the United States, we've estimated, we've had an estimate of about 45.6 million confirmed cases and three quarters of a million deaths. Seventy-seven percent of those deaths have occurred in adults 65 years or older. And that has led a lot of people to think of this virus as a virus that really causes a disease in, in old folks and older adults. But that's not entirely the case. And so today I wanted to really focus on, on children and adolescents and young adults and how COVID-19 affects those age groups. So looking again at US data, we've had about one million cases of COVID in kids zero to four years of age and another four and a half million in children five to 17 years of age. And then if we look at young adults, 18 to 29, we've had about 7.9 million cases. The US doesn't break down hospital data into smaller age groups, but in children in general, we've had about 66,000 hospitalizations due to COVID-19. And young adults, we've had almost three times that much, 166,000. And unfortunately, over 550 children have died in the US from this virus, as well as another 4,000 young adults. But those numbers don't really tell the whole picture. They don't give us a sense of the time when, when this is happening and what's been happening over time. And they don't also give us a sense of how, what the burden of disease is in children. So here on the left, I've drawn out a graph of the number of deaths we've had in children from COVID-19 over the course of the pandemic over each month. And you can see both in the zero to four age group in blue and in the five to 14 age group in orange, that we've seen the most deaths per month in, in the last two months in August and September of this year. Why is that? Well, if we look at the graph on the right, we can look at the number of cases that we've detected in both children and adults over time. And you can see that actually in the months of August and September, we were seeing the highest number of cases in children than we've ever seen in this pandemic. And in fact, 25% of cases that we detected in the US in the last few months have been in children. So what's the, the other burden in children? And let's, I think it's important to remember that when we talk about numbers of deaths in children, that really children don't die that often. They're, they're generally healthy, they generally do well with diseases. They don't have heart disease, they don't have a lot of cerebrovascular disease or these other things that kills adults. So, so when the Kaiser Family Foundation took a look over the last few months and asked, what is the major cause of death across the US? They found that, that COVID-19 was one of the top 10 causes of deaths in August, of death in August and September in both the 1 to 4 and the 5 to 14 age groups. Specifically, it ranked number seven in top causes of death in young children and number six in older children. And then looking again at the young adult population, this time 15 to 24, it was actually the fourth leading cause of death in that, that age group. So you can see from this data that really the morbidity and mortality of COVID is actually fairly severe in children, even though the, the absolute number of deaths are low. So just talking quickly about how we treat COVID, I don't want to get into too much detail about, about the specifics here because I want to be able to focus on other topics and get to our questions. But I think the important thing to recognize is we really don't have a lot of good therapies for COVID-19 at this time. We have one approved antiviral medication called Remdesivir, which helps prevent the virus from replicating once it gets into your body. And then we have a couple of medications that can help decrease the body's inflammatory response because we've learned that late in infection, in very severe cases, it's really the overabundance of inflammation in the body that's doing a lot of harm. And so dexamethasone, a steroid, and then tocilizumab and baricitinib, which are immunomodulatory drugs, have been shown to improve mortality in patients with severe COVID. We do have one medication that can help prevent COVID from becoming worse early on in infection, and that is monoclonal antibody therapy. But unfortunately, that medication also requires an IV infusion. And so it's not something that can be easily given to patients who have been exposed to or early on in infection. So those are the, the major sort of effects of COVID-19, the infection itself in young children. But it's important to recognize that COVID has a lot of effects outside of that initial infection on the population. The first real child-specific effect of COVID that we've seen is called MISC, the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. And so this is a syndrome that was first detected in, in Europe and then detected in the United States. It's an inflammatory disease that occurs about four to six weeks after a COVID infection. In many children, this initial infection is mild and some of them are often asymptomatic. And we only know that they likely had infection because their parents or someone they were exposed to were infected. And it seems to be most common in children five to 13 years of age. The symptoms of, of MISC are fever, which usually starts a few days into the, the condition, as well as any of the following, sort of severe stomach pain, diarrhea or vomiting, a diffuse rash on the skin, very red eyes, lightheadedness or dizziness. And in the US, we've seen over 5,200 cases of MISC. And all of these cases have required hospitalization. So this is a condition that almost always requires hospitalization for children. Many children require admission to the intensive care unit because by the time they are admitted to the hospital, the disease is severe enough that's affecting their heart and infecting their heart's ability to pump blood. And they need some support in that. And unfortunately, 46 children have died across the US from this condition. On the bottom here, I've shown a graph of MISC in blue compared to a graph of the number of cases of COVID-19. And you can see that it seems to occur in waves after the waves of COVID that we've seen in the US. This graph is incomplete with the up-to-date data. We have seen some MISC after the most recent wave of COVID, although interestingly, less than we had seen in previous waves. The good news about MISC is that it's, it's readily treatable. So we know that prompt use of intravenous of immune globulin or IVIG, as well as steroids decreases mortality and decreases morbidity and really turns these children around. The, the biggest issue with MISC is that it can be very difficult to differentiate from other diseases and infections. Children can look very similar if they have simply sepsis or a severe infection with a bacterial pathogen. Some viruses can cause a similar syndrome during the actual infection with the virus. And in the US, we also have some infections that are transmitted by ticks that look very much like MISC. And the problem with that is the medicines that we're giving for MISC help dampen the immune response. And that is not something we want to do in other infections. So it's really important to be able to adequately distinguish MISC from a different infection before you go ahead and give treatment. And then even thinking about effects outside of the hospital, COVID has, has had massive effects on children in the US and across the world. Probably the most important is time out of school, not only because of school closures, which happened a lot during the early days of the pandemic, but obviously because when a child is sick, they can't go to school. And in many cases, if a child has been exposed to COVID-19, they need to quarantine at home until they are considered safe to go back to school. There's also symptoms after COVID infection or what is commonly termed as long COVID. And those can include difficulty breathing, inflammation of the heart, loss of taste and smell, leading children not to eat or drink, tiredness, difficulty concentrating or brain fog and other numerous symptoms. It's unclear how common these symptoms are. There have been very different reports of, of how frequent we see this. And they do luckily seem to be less common in children than adults, but they, they are present and can cause severe morbidity over time. And then finally, really unfortunate in the US is that the loss of parents or caregivers because adults are obviously more likely to die of this disease than children. It's estimated that about 140,000 US children have lost either a parent or one of their primary caregivers to this virus. But there is some good news about COVID-19. And that, that good news comes in the, the form of vaccines and the fact that vaccines are highly effective against this virus. So on this slide, I'm just showing the, the three vaccines that, that I understand are available in the Bahamas. The first is the vaccine produced by AstraZeneca and the University of Oxford. The second is the Pfizer mRNA vaccine, and then the third is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. We use a fourth vaccine in the US as well, which is the Moderna vaccine that is very similar to the Pfizer vaccine. So both AstraZeneca and Pfizer are a two-dose vaccine. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is approved as a one-dose vaccine, although there is a possibility of needing a booster dose after that initial dose. Pfizer is approved for children 12 years and up, whereas AstraZeneca and Johnson &amp; Johnson has been approved for children, or adults 18 years and older. And all three of these vaccines have good efficacy, both against symptomatic COVID, but more importantly, they have great efficacy against, in preventing hospitalizations and preventing death from COVID-19. So those, those data that I was showing were from the initial clinical trials of those three vaccines. But we, if we look at US data on patients either being infected with COVID-19 or being hospitalized and dying from COVID-19, we can see that these vaccines are holding up in the real world and they're holding up against the Delta variant that is currently spreading across the United States. So the graph on the left here shows cases of COVID-19, so COVID-19 positive tests in the community. And it's shown as the rate per 100,000 people. And they, the CDC divided this into the unvaccinated population in black and then those vaccinated with either the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is also called Dianson, Pfizer or Moderna. And you can see that most of the people being infected in the United States are unvaccinated at this point. These vaccines are really protected against infection. And the CDC is estimating that about, there's about a six times higher risk of testing positive for COVID-19 if you are unvaccinated. The same is true for deaths, which is the graph shown here. And the CDC estimates that there is about 11 times higher risk of dying from COVID-19 if you are unvaccinated. We don't have as much data in children because we only have the vaccine that is approved from 12 years and up. But we know that that vaccine is 90% effective against infection. And we actually have new data that just came out for the five to 11-year-old trials for Pfizer that shows that that vaccine is equally effective in that age group. I do note that the five to 11-year-olds receive a lower dose of the vaccine than older age groups. And actually, the FDA last week approved the Pfizer vaccine for the five to 11 age range. And the CDC is meeting this week to discuss a full recommendation of that vaccine for those ages. Recently, the CDC did an analysis of adolescents across the US and looked at who was being hospitalized for COVID-19. And they found that in the months of June and July, adolescents who had not been vaccinated had a 10 times higher risk of being hospitalized from COVID compared to those who had been vaccinated. So this vaccine is again, holding up in real world against the Delta variant. I just wanted to also make a note about vaccines and pregnancy because misinformation about vaccines and their safety in pregnancy has been a big issue in the United States and across the world. It's important to recognize that these vaccines do not have the live COVID-19 virus. So they cannot make a mother or a baby sick with COVID-19. Studies have shown that there is no increased risk of miscarriages, abortions or stillbirths after, in mothers who received this vaccine either before pregnancy or during pregnancy. And also importantly, there was no increased risk of preterm delivery of congenital abnormalities of infants who are small-sized or of early neonatal death after vaccination. There is an important, large reduction in risk of actual infection in pregnant women, which I will talk about why that's important later. And also, it's important to remember that vaccines not only protect the mother, but can also help protect the newborn. So if a mother is vaccinated before pregnancy or early in pregnancy, she will actually develop antibodies and transfer those antibodies across the placenta to the, to the fetus. And so the fetus will carry those antibodies through its early life until it's able to make antibodies of its own. And those paternal antibodies are really important in protecting against a wide variety of, of diseases. And COVID-19, given what this vaccine is, one of those diseases that we can protect against. The vaccines have not been shown to cause infertility. But something that, that your female patient should know is that the vaccines can cause a temporary change in menstruation. And so this has been seen with sometimes spotting or sometimes heavier or lighter periods after vaccination. It's important to, to recognize that that is a temporary change. That's not something that indicates that there isn't anything wrong with a woman's reproductive organs. And actually, changes in menstruation are something that are, are very common whenever your body is stressed. So in this case, your body is being stressed by a vaccine. But being infected with a virus can actually cause changes in menstruation. And also, we know that changes in your diet and other things like that can cause it too. So this is your body's normal response and goes back to normal after a few months. There are, there are groups in the US who are studying this so that we can provide more data to women to just let them know what, what should you expect after COVID vaccination? So going from vaccines to actual COVID-19 infection, we know that pregnant women are a group that is at severe risk. Are you guys able to hear me over the train? I think it'll probably stop soon. So, so pregnant women are at high risk of severe COVID-19. Pregnant women have twice the risk of hospitalization requiring an intensive care unit than non-pregnant women of the same age. And they have a 70% increased risk of death compared to non-pregnant women. There is also a risk to the fetus. There's an increased risk of preterm birth, stillbirth, and that the newborn will require admission to the neonatal ICU after delivery with, if a mother has a COVID-19 infection. So these are all very important reasons why women who are pregnant or who want to become pregnant should be vaccinated against COVID-19. Finally, what are the other side effects of COVID-19? So I talked about menstruation. The clinical trials show that most of these side effects are mild. They include typical side effects that you get from other vaccines, muscle pain, tiredness, headache, fever, chills, nausea. Some people report swollen lymph nodes either in their neck or in their underarms. And then occasionally, we have seen some localized rashes. I've noticed some rashes on people's hands after the vaccine. These tend to be very rare, but are something that, that happens and something that then goes away over time. I wanted to talk about three serious side effects that we've noted with vaccines, blood clots, myocarditis and severe allergic reactions. I think the most important thing to note is all of these side effects are very rare. And actually, the risk of these side effects after infection is higher than the risk of these side effects of vaccination. So we've noticed that the AstraZeneca vaccine and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine can cause blood clots. These blood clots occur in about 1 in 50,000 people, so are very rare. And it's thought that there may be a higher risk in younger women, although more recent studies haven't shown that. The blood clots usually occur between five and 30 days after vaccination. And they can be life-threatening, so it is a side effect to watch out for in patients if they are coming in, sort of reporting symptoms that might be concerning for a blood clot. Moving over to the mRNA vaccines, both the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine have been shown to cause myocarditis after vaccination. Again, this is a very rare side effect. In the overall population, it seems to occur in about 1 in 50,000 individuals. The highest-risk age group for this is, is young men, usually around 16 to 29, where it seems to occur in about one in every 10,000 men who are vaccinated. It is, it occurs within a week of vaccination. And it actually is more common with the second dose of vaccination. The good news about the myocarditis is it's typically mild. I have seen about three cases of this myself in our hospital because we act as the major referral hospital for the area. And most of these children, by the time I see them, are already ready to go home and asking when they're going to be discharged. So this is much more mild than the myocarditis we typically see with viral infections, which also occur very frequently in the same age group. It is treated with usually oral medications, NSAIDs and resolves in a few days. And we are having these children follow up with our cardiologists to make sure that there are no long-term effects, but we, we aren't noticing any long-term effects after myocarditis. And then finally, the final severe adverse event that we've noted with the vaccines is allergic reactions or anaphylaxis. It is again rare. I don't have a great estimate of these numbers because if you look at different papers, the estimates are all over the place. But they seem to be against specific compounds in each of the vaccines. In the mRNA vaccines, they are against polyethylene dicarb. And in the adenovirus vaccines, Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca, they're against a drug, a compound called polysorbate. So if you have a patient who has a history of reactions to either of these, you would not want to use that vaccine. As I mentioned, the risk of, of these serious side effects is much higher from infection than from vaccination. Studies have shown that the risk of blood clots after COVID-19 infection is 10 times higher than the risk from vaccines. And the risk of myocarditis is about eight times higher after infection. So finally, I just wanted to talk about younger children because obviously, we don't have a vaccine that is yet been able to be given to children under the age of 11. And children younger than the age of five, the vaccines are still in clinical trials and we don't have the results yet. What we have seen though, is that vaccination of family members can really protect young children from infection. Vaccination of family members decreases the risk that an unvaccinated family member gets COVID-19 by 45 to 97%, which is huge. Vaccination of communities can also protect children. The CDC noted that across the US states that have the lowest vaccine coverage were three and a half times more likely, children were three and a half times more likely to be hospitalized in those states when compared to states that have the highest vaccine coverage. And then finally, masking in schools is a really important intervention. And the CDC showed that schools without mask requirement were three and a half times more likely to have outbreaks of COVID than those with mask requirements. So conclusions, I've shown that COVID-19 causes severe disease, not only in adults, but also in children, and is a leading cause of death of children, in children in the United States. It also has other harms to children's well-being that go beyond the infection itself. The vaccines that we have against COVID are safe and effective in both reducing the risk of infection and the risk of hospitalization and death. The risk of serious side effects from these vaccines are low and they are safe even in pregnancy and protect both the mother and infant. And importantly, children who are too young to be vaccinated can be protected by other methods, including vaccinating their families and masking. And just a little plug for our global medicine. We have a large global medicine department at Penn that consists of our global patient services who helps bring our care or bring families to our care from around the world, but also pediatric education and global health. And for those of you who are interested in, in more sort of educational topics, sorry, my screen there. We have our pathways, which is sort of our recommendations for treatment of various diseases are available to the public on our website. And there are also hundreds of topics where different faculty and staff from CHOP have recorded videos that you can view at chop.edu open, so our open access learning page. And that is all I have, so I'm ready. If people have questions or if there are other things that people would like me to talk about more, happy to chat.
Okay, well, Dr. Seash, thank you so much for your presentation. It was very informative. And I would invite others to, if you have questions, you can just post them in the chat. I do have a few that persons would have sent on yesterday and then this morning. So I will start with the few that I have and I, again, I invite others to just post your questions in the chat, please. Okay, the first question. Why are we being asked to take the vaccine when reportedly it does not prevent the transmission of COVID-19?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And I think this is actually one of the areas where we have not been very good about communicating sort of what the benefits of the vaccine are and we have failed in our, our communication of public health. So there was a study that came out a few months ago that showed that, that people who were vaccinated could transmit COVID. I think the important thing to recognize even with that study is that, and additional studies have come out after this, sort of proving this point, is that the vaccines still do greatly reduce the risk of transmission of COVID in a number of ways. First, they reduce your risk of being infected with the virus. And so if you can't be infected with the virus, you cannot transmit it to someone else. And second, actually, a number of studies have come out afterwards that have shown that, that there is still a reduction, at least of 50%, in the risk of transmitting COVID even when you are infected. Even if you are vaccinated and have been infected. So overall, there is a important reduction in the risk of transmitting COVID to someone else in someone who is vaccinated.
Okay, okay, thank you. The next question. I was previously diagnosed with COVID-19. I was able to fight it off naturally through my immune system. Is there proof that the vaccine is more useful than our immune system to fight COVID?
Yeah, so, so I think one, one thing to clarify with that question is that the vaccines actually are a tool in teaching our immune system. So vaccines teach your immune system how to naturally fight a disease by showing your immune system little parts of that virus. The, the difference, the major difference between vaccines and the virus itself is that the vaccines can't cause severe infection. So they can't infect you. They just go in and, and teach your body how to, how to then fight the virus in the future. So I, I, I think it's important to recognize that vaccines themselves are a natural way of, of your immune system learning how to fight a virus. As to the question of, is there a benefit of vaccines if you've already had COVID? As to the question of, is there a benefit of vaccines if you've already had COVID? Um, or if you consider yourself healthy, I think the answer to both of those questions is yes. So so the CDC released a report last week that showed that people with prior COVID infection were five times more likely to be reinfected with COVID than people who have been vaccinated. Um, and we also have a lot of data that we've collected throughout the pandemic that show that these vaccines actually take that strong immune response that was built to COVID from in someone who's already been infected and make it even stronger. So they make you even less likely to be infected with COVID and less likely to spread that to others. So there is still a benefit of vaccination after infection. Um, and I think the same is true for people who are have not yet been infected. The, we can't predict the risk of, or we don't have a great way of predicting who was going to get severe COVID and who isn't. I've known very healthy people who've had COVID, who've been very sick, and we just don't know why yet. And so the vaccine is a great way to train your body to react to this virus before you see it. So when you see this virus, your body can fight it as best it can.
Okay, um, so this is the third question. Why should I take the vaccine if there is a likelihood that I may die from the side effects?
So so the likelihood that you will die from the side effects of the vaccine is incredibly low. I think the one side effect that we have seen that some some patients have unfortunately died with is is the blood clots that I mentioned. But as I showed, that risk, the risk of blood clots in general is very low. It's it's less than one in fifty thousand. Um, the risk of dying from COVID, um, even if you're a child, is is higher than that. So and especially, this is especially true for adults. I think at this point, we have to recognize that this virus isn't going away and that likely everyone in the world will be exposed to this virus at some time. And you cannot predict if you're going to be lucky enough to survive that virus infection or unlucky enough to die. Um, and so at this point, the risk of dying from a side effect of the vaccine is far, far, far less than the risk of dying from COVID.
Okay, yes, um, I'm getting one question in the chat. Is it safe for an adolescent, and this is age fourteen, newly diagnosed with lupus, to take the Pfizer vaccine?
Yes, so autoimmune diseases are not a contraindication to the Pfizer vaccine or to any of the the currently approved vaccines. Um, and I would say that someone with an autoimmune disease, lupus or otherwise, should actually be strongly encouraged to get the vaccine. Um, the reason being, a lot of the treatments for these diseases involve suppressing your immune system. And people who are immunosuppressed are more likely to contract COVID and more likely to have severe symptoms from COVID. So it's really important to to get yourself protected by getting vaccinated, or in this case, this adolescent.
Okay, yes, um. Fourth question, sorry, fifth question. Um, I am aware that there are reports of vaccine availability, and this is something that you presented on um, for the younger pediatric population. Um, is there consideration for the adjustment of the dosage for the vaccine of that age group?
Yeah, so so the the vaccine dosage, okay, I, to break it down by vaccine, we don't have a lot of data yet on Johnson and Johnson and AstraZeneca. We don't have data of the younger age group for those two vaccines. But if we think about the Pfizer vaccine, where we have the most data from clinical trials, um, the dose of the Pfizer vaccine is the same for patients twelve years and up. So a twelve-year-old, an adult receive the same dose. The dose for patients ages five to eleven is actually lower than the dosage for adults. And then the dosage for the younger age groups will be even lower than that. Um, the dosages for vaccines are not based on body size, they're not based on weight. So you don't have to worry about, oh, I have a twelve or eleven-year-old, but he's a very big eleven-year-old vice person. They're actually based on how, where your immune system is in development. And we know that young children just have a much more robust immune response to anything, to an infection, to a vaccine. And so don't actually need um, as high of a dose as older children or adults.
Okay.
So those are all based on ages, and those ages are based on the development of the immune system.
Okay, um, is there any data regarding deaths of the vaccinated, like persons who would have been vaccinated? Um, but you know, ended up with COVID and died, you know, due to.
Yeah, so so we have had a few deaths, unfortunately, in people who have been vaccinated. Um, but those deaths are actually um, much less frequent than people of the same age who have been, who are not vaccinated. Um, so I think, I can just, let me see if I can share my screen again. Yeah, so this slide here compares that and um. Can you see my pointer if I'm moving it?
No, I cannot see your, well, I saw it just now. Yes, I can see it now.
So looking at the right side side of the of the screen here, you can see this is a graph comparing deaths in unvaccinated and vaccinated people. Uh, and you can see that in the US, um, between the months of August and September, um, we were having almost fifteen deaths per hundred thousand people. This is just per hundred thousand people in the population, not per hundred thousand people infected.
Okay.
In the unvaccinated population, but the risk of death after vaccination was reduced over tenfold. Um, most of the breakthrough cases and breakthrough deaths are occurring in older adults, sixty-five and older, um, who seem to just have a less robust for immune immune response to the vaccine, and therefore less protective against infection and death after the vaccine. And that is why the CDC and the FDA have recommended a third dose of the vaccine six months after the first two doses for Pfizer, um, for those ages.
Okay, so so it's three doses for the Pfizer for the elderly population is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're we're seeing that, we still consider the series a two-dose series, but we're we are saying that older adults should consider getting a booster dose six months out um, to help rebuild that immune response. Um, and a lot of vaccines, we do this where we give a few doses and then you give a booster dose later. Um, because that booster dose actually activates a lot of the immune cells that are are laying dormant in your body that know how to fight this infection and causes those to really go crazy and create a lot more protection against the the virus.
Okay, so would you say it's similar to maybe the tetanus tox, so you know, you take those every ten years or so? Is it, would it be something related or, you know, similar to that?
It's hard to predict. Um, I I don't wanna, I don't know right now if this will be a how how often you might need a booster or if everyone will actually need a booster. Um, but it is similar to, in concept to that, where we know that if you have not had a tetanus vaccine in the past ten years, you are at higher risk of getting tetanus if you have the right exposure.
Right, and I also heard you mention, um, we talked about the elderly, but you know, the younger children, they also have, you know, some difficulty with their immune system and in it not being developed. So with the newer age um, expansion with the five to eleven-year-olds, is that also something, would they require a booster, or do you do you have any um, data to support whether that would be?
Um, I don't think we will, we will probably not know that for a while. I think what what are, at least the FDA and the CDC in the United States are going to look for is are we noticing that people who were vaccinated earlier are at high risk of being hospitalized or dying? Because our our biggest hope here is preventing people from ending up in the hospital and dying from this virus. So if they do notice that, they may say, okay, we need an additional dose.
Okay.
Um, but since we've only recently started vaccinating in those younger age groups, we probably won't have that information for a while.
Okay, all right. Um, it has another question from the chat. You mentioned that the vaccine does not affect fertility. Do you have any statistics relating to, related to that?
Um, yeah, so so there were a number of studies done early on. Um, there were a few studies, most of the trials, at least initially, attempt to exclude pregnant women because whenever you are testing a new product, you don't want to exclude someone who was or include someone who was pregnant. Um, but every once in a while, you accidentally get someone in the trial who is pregnant. Um, and you have, and studies of those populations showed that there was no differences in the outcomes for their babies. Um, but this question was about sterility specifically or about it?
Well, there is a question on conception, and I think it's related, and then infertility, if there is any um, correlation with the vaccine causing those.
Yeah, so so we have not seen any evidence of infertility after vaccination. Um, I can see if I can find specific references to to support that, but um, that is not something we have been worried about. Um, either in men or in women or actually also in men, because I know there have been questions and concerns about infertility in men as well.
Right, right. Um, here's another question from the chat. What is your opinion on ivermectin as a treatment option?
So ivermectin is a drug that um, I, we use around the world for treatment of certain parasitic infections. So it's actually a drug we know a lot about. Um, and was shown, when you looked in a test tube, that could, that it could kill the virus. Unfortunately, when we've, when we've taken this drug and moved it over into people, we're not really seeing the same response. There was one study out of Brazil that seemed to show a good response to ivermectin, but it turned out that unfortunately, a lot of that data was fraudulent. Um, and so we've excluded that study from our analyses. Um, at this point, we're waiting on additional data for ivermectin to see if it works. I think overall, it is unlikely to help in someone who has been hospitalized with COVID nineteen. But there are a few ongoing studies in the United States looking at it as an early treatment for someone who has just tested positive. Um, because we just don't have the data, my thought would be that people should not be treated with ivermectin unless they are undergoing, are taking part in a clinical trial that is actually looking at the effect of ivermectin. Um, because I think it's important to remember that all these drugs, even drugs that we use around the world, um, do have side effects. And if if it's true that there is no effect of ivermectin on COVID in people, then all you are doing to those people is harming them with the side effects of those drugs.
Yes.
Uh, but hopefully, in the next few months, we will have more information on on whether ivermectin is a good drug in early COVID infection.
Okay, so you know, this is something that's already in clinical trials or?
Yeah, so, so there is, there is a clinical trial being run out of the University of Minnesota, I believe, that is looking at ivermectin. It's looking at an inhaled steroid. It's looking at a drug called fluvoxamine, which is um, uh, an antidepressant that actually has some good data come out um, a week or two ago for early infection. Um, and it's looking at another, I I don't remember the other drugs off the top of my head, but they're looking at a group of drugs. Um, and it's run by a scientist who is very good at clinical trials and who um, who I would trust to be able to design a very good trial to look at that. Um, and there is a second study, I believe, being run out of the NIH, also looking at ivermectin along with a number of other drugs.
Okay.
So my my recommendation to people in the US is always to try to enroll in a clinical trial. Obviously, that can't apply here, but but I would say, unless you are part of a clinical trial, these are not drugs that I would recommend.
Okay, understood. Um, question, can pregnant women take any of the vaccines? Is is there one that is more advised for someone who's pregnant versus another type?
No, so all of that vaccines are equally effective against severe disease. Um, and all of the vaccines have been shown to be safe in pregnancy. Um, the, we probably have the least data on the Johnson and Johnson vaccine because we've given it the least. But Pfizer has been given to many people across the world, including pregnant women, and we know it's safe. And AstraZeneca um, is both being given in the UK, but also is one of the the few vaccines that are being manufactured in other countries and being given. It's actually the main vaccine that's been given in India.
India, right.
Yeah, so we have a lot of data on that vaccine as well.
Okay, um, another question from the chat. Are there any prerequisite tests or any special testing that needs to be done for someone who is immunocompromised before taking the vaccine? Sorry, they said before taking the jab.
No, there are, there are no test, specific tests that you would need to get before getting the vaccine. I would recommend talking to your doctor about just exactly how you should get vaccinated because um, I think I did not mention this in the slide, but currently in the US, we are recommending three doses for people who are considered severely immunocompromised.
Okay.
Um, so you would want to talk to your doctor to say, do I qualify as someone who needs three doses of vaccine? Or do I only need two doses of that vaccine? And your doctor can determine that based on how immunocompromised they think you are. Um, the reason being that we have seen that that people who are severely immunocompromised, for example, those who have received um, organ transplants, those who have cancer, um, do not respond as well to these vaccines or to any vaccines when compared to healthy adult.
Okay, so would that be a population that might be excluded from vaccination because of their immune system?
No, so they were actually in included in the vaccinations, but when we, when we, the the vaccines are still safe, they just don't have much of an effect. So we use a third dose to help boost that effect in that population.
Okay, okay. Um, here's another question. I know that you mentioned earlier in your presentation, um, you spoke about how the vaccine may affect um, a female's menstrual cycle. Um, but the question is how, you know, what what exactly is happening there? Why does that happen?
Yeah, um, and this is still something that we are collecting data on. Um, and so so the the symptoms that that we have seen in women are spotting or heavy menstruation. You can also have missed periods potentially. Um, the I I can't speak to the exact pathophysiology of why menstruation changes. I'm not an expert in that. But I can say that that it's on our bodies, we have evolved to to realize that we shouldn't have babies when there is stress. So women's bodies naturally will change their menstruation in the setting of stress. Um, we see this in women who get sick with a cold or the flu or another virus. We also see this a lot in young female athletes when they are exercising so much that their bodies actually stop their menstruation, which which can, in the long run, be dangerous for them. Um, but we know that 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 is a normal stress response, and that is actually a healthy part of how we have evolved as humans to make sure that we have babies at the right time. Um, but I think the important thing to recognize is that this is a very temporary change in menstruation. It doesn't mean that there is is something bad happening. Um, and that women who have these changes, their menstrual cycle reverts to normal um, within a cycle or two.
Okay, so Dr. Sage, um, do you know how, I know that vaccines take a while. You know, there's, you know, there has to be testing and trials and everything before it's actually approved to be released for human consumption. Do you know, you know, how old these vaccines are? Like, what is the time they have been um, tested and then released?
Yeah, so that's, that's a really, a really good question, because I think that comes up a lot as some, as people's concerns. Well, these vaccines seem to have been developed very fast. So I I think there are, there are two parts to that. How old is the technology in the vaccines? So as I mentioned, the AstraZeneca vaccine and the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, they use a vector called an adenovirus factor. Those vectors have been studied since the nineteen eighties. So we are about forty years into learning about those vectors. mRNA vaccines have been studied since about the nineteen nineties. Um, and so we're about thirty years into learning about those. Um, the first vaccines of both of these categories outside of COVID were started, started use in the early two thousands. So there was a vaccine um, that used the adenovirus vector platform against HIV that was tested in South Africa. Unfortunately, did not prevent HIV, which is why we are not using that vaccine. But we have given these vaccines or these types of vaccines to people since the early two thousands. And so we've had almost fifteen years of watching people after the adenovirus vaccine to make sure there are no adverse effects. Um, the first mRNA vaccines were given in sort of the twenty teens. Um, and and were in clinical trials against influenza, against rabies. Um, there's actually now an approved vaccine against Ebola that is based on mRNA. And so we've had many years also to look at those. I think the more important thing about vaccines, though, is we've actually never seen a side effect of a vaccine that has occurred more than two months after the vaccine is given.
Okay.
So vaccines have a very short-term effect on your body. The mRNA vaccine, the mRNA that's in it, is only there for days and then gets degraded. And mRNA is a normal part of all of our cells. So that goes away within a few days. The protein that that mRNA teaches your body to make stays for a few weeks and then goes away as well. And so the only thing left after that are the immune cells that have been trained to fight the virus from that vaccine. The same is true The same is true for the adenovirus vaccine. The DNA probably lasts a little bit longer than the mRNA, but that DNA cannot get into your, your genetic code in any way and that virus cannot replicate after it gets into those cells. So within a few days, that is also gone. And all that's left is then the protein for a few weeks and then your immune response. So so even though these, these vaccines came to market very quickly, we tested them for long enough that we knew that we would not see side effects. So we looked at that two-month window in those clinical trials. And now we actually have a huge amount of data on these vaccines because we've given them to people and countries around the world are actively monitoring for side effects. Not because we're worried about side effects six months out, but because we're worried about that side effect that we may only see in every fifty thousand people where the clinical trial was not large enough to do that. And so we have lots of data on that showing that these vaccines are safe.
Okay. Okay, so I have one more question in the chat. What exactly is heart inflammation? This was one of those, I think, reactions of the vaccine.
Yeah. So, so heart inflammation is where it, the cells, the mu, so your heart is made of muscle cells. And those muscle cells squeeze and that's what allows your heart to pump. So your cells, any cells in your body can become inflamed. If the cells on the outside of your body become inflamed, deal with redness, with pain. But the cells in your heart can also become inflamed. And when they do that, they don't always work as well. So we've known for a long time that different viruses can go to the heart and can cause inflammation of the heart. Those viruses unfortunately get into those heart muscle cells and they reproduce in those heart muscle cells. And so they can cause a very severe inflammation in the heart that can lead people to require a lot of additional outside support for their body to work. We don't exactly know why the vaccines cause this type of inflammation. It's, we're still trying to study that and better understand it so we can hopefully prevent it. But it seems that young, young men are especially, are most likely to get heart inflammation either from a vaccine or from a virus or something else. Because this is the age group that we're actually seeing it in vaccines are the age group that we really see heart inflammation in general. So, so heart inflammation really just means your heart cells are inflamed. We don't specifically know why for the mRNA vaccines, but we do know that that heart inflammation goes away. It starts to come down very quickly within a few days. And then when we follow up those patients, we have not seen any long-term effects so far. What I, there was one other thing I was gonna say, the, the symptoms of heart inflammation, I think, are, are important to recognize. And they are similar to the symptoms of a heart attack. Because both of those are sort of caused by your heart not working as well as it should. So chest pain, shortness of breath, feeling out of breath with walking. Sometimes you can get fluid building up in different parts of your body are sort of the most common symptoms that we have seen. But obviously, when that occurs in a twelve-year-old, we don't think heart attack. We think this is some other inflammation of the heart. So if you are seeing someone who was having pain in their chest or difficulty breathing after receiving, in a week of receiving one of these vaccines, that is something that can
Okay. Okay, I think I may have one more question. Do we have time for one more question? Okay, so you, you spoke about the monoclonal, if I'm not pronouncing it correctly. Treatment, yes. Is that something that is, that's proven to be helpful in terms of efficacy and how is that? How does that work?
Yeah, so, so monoclonal antibodies really just mean a single type of antibody that has been developed to target a single thing. So in this place, these antibodies are an antibody that binds to the spike protein, which is the protein on the outside of the coronavirus. And it's the protein that needs to bind to attach to your cells to get your cells in. So these monoclonal antibodies prevent the virus from attaching your cells and infecting those cells. Monoclonal antibodies actually work very similar to how your own immune system works in the antibody response. So when we give you a vaccine against COVID, or if you're naturally infected by COVID, your body produces its own antibodies that do the same thing as these monoclonal antibodies. The monoclonal antibodies have been shown to be effective in preventing severe COVID and people seem to respond very quickly to them. But the important thing is they need to be given very early in disease. So if you're waiting till someone is sick enough to need to be in the hospital, the monoclonal antibodies aren't helping. And I think the way you can think about that is by the time you're sick enough to be in the hospital, your body has already developed its own antibodies against COVID and the virus has just gone so far that those antibodies aren't enough. So if you can get a monoclonal antibody to a patient within the first few days of developing symptoms or testing positive, if they're asymptomatic, then that can help them, help decrease the risk of hospitalization. The problem is monoclonal antibodies need to be given by an intravenous infusion. So it's not something you can give out to the general population as a pill. You need to come to a center that is okay with accepting someone who has COVID. Put them in a chair, give them an infusion for a few hours and then send them home. So it's, it's a difficult treatment to get out to people. The other thing is monoclonal antibodies have side effects. The most common side effect of monoclonals is gonna be again, an allergic reaction or anaphylaxis to something in it. And then those monoclonal antibodies only last about thirty to ninety days in your body. So they don't give you the long-term protection that being vaccinated does. So if you get a monoclonal antibody, you'll have protection for a bit, but then those antibodies go away, your body doesn't know how to make more of them. If you give someone a vaccine, you teach the body how to make those antibodies itself and your body can make those antibodies for the rest of your life.
Right, so you have a long-term coverage. Okay, Dr. Sage, I mean, the, the chat, the, the chat group is still blowing up, but we are, we are out of time. I want to thank you so much for all of the, this wealth of knowledge that you have shared with us today on behalf of the management and the staff of Family Guardian and Bahama Health and our audience, we would like to thank you so much for everything. And we will definitely forward, you know, the, the balance of the questions over to you so that you can respond. But I want to say thank you again so much and I encourage you to continue your studies because it is, you know, vital to us so, so that we can understand, you know, what is happening in the world and how we can prepare ourselves.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. And yes, I'll, I'll try to answer those questions and also provide some resources on, on pregnancy and COVID and fertility and COVID. And I'm also seeing, and Ms. Butler, I'll, I'll send you the information on the chat resources as well.
Okay, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you too.